Welcome to the Eastham Select Board Meeting of Monday, October 30th, 2023. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access Channel 8 and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. And before we do anything, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie.
Thanks, Art. It's with deep sadness that we wanted to let you know that former Select Board Member, Jared Collins, died last October 21st, so recently, after a brief illness. And we're just, I think the whole community is shocked and saddened by that loss to us and to his family. And so we send sympathy to his wife, Alana, and the rest of the Collins family at this really horrible time for them. And there are visiting hours at the Nickerson Funeral Home this Thursday between 4:00 and 7:00, if anyone wants to stop in and see the family and send some love.
Thank you, Jackie. We'll start with public and Select Board information. Does anyone have anything?
Go ahead. You go.
All right. Yes, I do. Thank you. Putnam Farm, which is just, it's right behind the courthouse in Orleans, and it's right, goes right up, literally, to the Eastham border. They are offering, I believe it's five new plots for their lottery. So they're 50 by 70 feet each, so they're huge garden plots. It's an annual fee of $500. And I believe in the spring, they will do the, run the lottery, but they encourage people to sign up, you know, soon. Should do so now, it says, to sign up. And you can either call, I believe, the Orleans Conservation Department, or in person, visit Town Hall and sign up. Because if you don't have garden space at your home and you'd like to grow something, you can. It doesn't, it can be for personal use, it can be for commercial use. They have no availability to sell things at the farm, but you can take them other places for other uses.
Yeah, they just want it to be used. There's going to be a flyer sent out. I'm sure it's online, but they, he just sent it to us today. I'll put it in my manager's report and we'll do a flash.
Great. Thank you.
Jury, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the rec department and all the town departments that participated in Halloween on the Green on Saturday. It was a, it was great to see all the children out there and with all the costumes, and it was, it was a pleasure. And so I wanted to just extend that. And because we participated as a select board, we were offered a golden gourd, which we have right here. And I think it's just something great. We can put it by art there, and he can put it in the Eastham Select Board Trophy case at his house.
We could just call you the Golden Gourds. That could be his new ceremonial title.
The Golden Goose.
There it is.
It's very, it's very attractive.
And the other, the only other thing is, the next rec event is Sunday, November 12th, I think at noon. It's the rubber duck race at First Encounter Beach, which is just a great event to watch the kids just have a blast. And if you haven't been there, you should try and make it at least once.
Is it the 12th?
The 12th, Sunday, the 12th. I believe it's at noon.
And it's at Bee's River?
Bee's River.
Okay.
Yeah, Bee's River, at the far end of First Encounter Beach.
And you can win?
You can win turkeys or pies.
Turkeys or pies. I've won pies two years in a row.
I've won both.
Do you have to bring a duck?
No, you have, you buy, you purchase a duck.
Call the rec department.
And you purchase a duck for a dollar. You register.
Register with the rec department.
I had ducks way through five one year.
Can I buy like many ducks?
All right.
Buy tickets, and then the ducks race, and then they pull out ducks out of a bucket, and if you have the right number, you get a gift.
Oh, neat. I've never been able to go. I'm playing hooky. I'm going.
A lot of fun.
I want to go, too. This is, be my first year.
Sometimes it's been 60 degrees and sometimes it's been like 12.
And Jerry does, always does a good job of handing out hot chocolate.
Good.
Jerry's a hot chocolate guy.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Jerry. We met today with everybody and their brother on the Salt Pond Remediation Program for the road runoff. We had our consultants there, and we had the MCRS there, and a lot of people. We committed to give what we hope is the last piece of information at this stage of the project to the seashore within the next week. And they committed to respond in six weeks. So hopefully, we're moving forward with the program. And so that's where we are. Does anybody in the, of the public have anything they'd like to speak to about that is not on today's agenda? Okay, we'll get started. We're going to change the agenda a little bit. We're going to start with Scott Carey on committee appointments.
Hi. Good evening, everybody here?
Yeah.
I also would like to extend my sympathies to the Collins and Alana and her mom, and quite a sad story, so thinking of them. But tonight, I'm here as a moderator to fulfill an appointment to the search committee. And it's, I'm pleased to let you know that we've appointed a woman by the name of Gargana Alexeva. And I think that her resume of experience was included in your packet and clearly has a great background of industry work in the, I think a lot of it is web design and that type of field. Also, Kate Paradise and Sheldon Ross have met with her.
Oh, nice.
Oh, okay, great. And couldn't have had any more glowing things to say, and want to welcome her to her tips, participation in our democracy here in the town of Eastham. And as a moderator, I'm very pleased to make that appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is a very, very important position because you funnel all the candidates for all the committees, and we need a lot of candidates. So thank you.
Take it seriously.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, too.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I got to know Gargana a little bit when the weekend committee, she worked diligently with Joanna. And yeah, very hardworking woman, and yeah, look forward to it.
Great. And again, thank you for your service, and we appreciate it, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to start with the review and approval of the bond issue results.
So in your packet, you have a long motion that you just need to reference to make.
Would I get to read it?
You don't need to read it, you can reference the, the motion as printed in your packet. But we did get eight bidders to provide responses to our bond issuance, and the bond is awarded to Fidelity Capital Markets. As you recall, we had about $10,250,000 worth of bonds to issue. They offered, all the bonds were stated at a 5% interest cost, but the way this typically works, and this was no exception, all, the eight bidders provided a bond premium, which essentially either buys down principal or interest associated with it. So we end up in the final result, Fidelity being the lowest cost to the town, issuing $9,950,000 worth of bonds, and the net interest cost after the application of the premium being 3.73%.
Nice.
Nice.
As part of that process, we also had to go through a bond rating analysis with Standard and Poor's. I think it went very well, and the good news is, in every category, we're now considered very strong with one exception, and that's our debt and contingent liabilities, because as a small town, we've got a lot of debt, and they continue to rate us very weak. And therefore, in their opinion, are not giving us a AAA rating, but we maintained a AA-plus rating. So that was a little disheartening, but we'll follow up with them on some of the criteria. I, you know, I take issue with that analysis, but it is what it is, and it's hard to fight it at this point. So, but I think, you know, it felt pretty good that all the efforts that the town communities, town meetings, select board, finance committee have supported over the last few years was recognized and were considered very strong, you know, the key one was a very strong management. It's just indicative of the effort we put into what we're doing, and so the town should be, feel good about that. But then I write, we're ready to move forward with the bonds, and so what we're looking for tonight is a motion and a vote on what was presented in your packet.
Does anybody in the select board have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, jury.
Yes, I move that we approve the bond statements that are, appear in our packet.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Thank you. The next thing we're going to talk about are common victual license renewals. One for Cumberland Farms at number 6731 at 4460 State Highway, and one for the Eastham Elementary School at 200 Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah. I just have a quick question. On the one for Cumberland Farms, it says days and hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 24 hours. Is that is the maximum that they're allowed to operate, but they can operate under those hours?
Right.
Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the common victular licenses as, renewals as presented.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. All right. Next is the community appointments. Beverly Hobbs to the Human Services Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Beverly Hobbs to the Human Services Advisory Commission, or Committee.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
I believe she's been on before.
Yep.
Previously, yes.
Okay. We'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And we have one committee resignation, Lauren Arcamano from the Human Services Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Lauren Arcamano, Arcomono.
Second.
Any discussion? So we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, up to the town manager's report.
So we don't have too much tonight. I just, I highlighted some regional things that are coming up. Also, just to let you know that the opioid settlement money, you, you all had, or the four Outer Cape Town Boards of, or Select Boards, had made a decision a few months ago to try and design a program that would be for the Outer Cape and to address the opioid issue, to use our opioid funds that we've gotten from the legal settlement. And so that proposal is coming before the Board of Health and will come to you very shortly after, so probably at your meeting in November. Just wanted to let you know that you'll have a chance to take a look at that, see what you think. And the Department of Public Health also gave the county a Public Health Excellence Grant that will promote a lot of cross-jurisdictional training and preparation for all the towns on the Cape, so that's a good one. Quite a few of us went to the Housing Summit in Hyannis, was very good. They did a lot of highlighting programs and services that have come out in the past year and discussed at length the new proposed housing bond bill. And I know Jamie also went to a session on that, so that, we'll be bringing some information forward to you on that. And the best news ever came from rich. The town of Eastham has been notified that we will receive $4,740,000 in loan forgiveness or 31.6% of the contract for Phase 2E of the public water system.
Phenomenal.
So this is, you know, SRF is receiving both ARPA and the bipartisan infrastructure law funds, so that's our portion. So isn't that exciting?
Yes.
Fantastic.
That's good.
And we've had good loan forgiveness. I mean, we've had good percentages in the past, but nothing like this. I think they'll-
We had 20-some percent.
Yeah, that was like the first one, and then we had a 13 one year.
That's right.
So can you equate that to a tax avoidance?
Yeah, we do not have to pay back $4,740,000.
Can we equate that back, so like do a flash, explain, explain what we got, and then came back, that means for every householder, they'll save $2.50 of CSEs value.
That we wouldn't have had to-
Yeah, that we would have had to pay.
Yep, could figure that out.
That'd be great.
It's awesome.
Okay, is that it?
Oh, and one more thing. As you know, Eastham and Orleans have been meeting. We formed a new wastewater task force for the two towns just to address our watersheds that are shared, so that's Town Cove, Rock Harbor, and Abalino's Creek, just, you know, anyway. So we've been meeting for, I want to say, the past four or five months, and what we would like your permission to do is send a letter on behalf of both Eastham and Orleans to the DEP, basically stating that we are working on coordinated solutions, that we intend to file watershed permit for our joint estuaries, and that will help us freeze that point in time so that our residents will be protected from having to advance IA systems very soon. So if you want to take a look, it wasn't not in your packet, but just take a look at it and see if it's something that you guys could agree to do, and that would be awesome.
To just let you know that we're okay with it?
Yeah, they have to actually authorize you to sign it, I think, is basically.
Authorized art to sign it?
Mm-hmm.
You guys will draft the letter?
Yeah. This is it.
This is the letter.
This is the letter?
Yeah.
This is the letter.
Is it possible to email the letter Suzanne?
I think you have it there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Suzanne, sure.
All right, so how do we want to do this?
George Meserve sent it to me. We'll have to scan it and send it.
Wait till our next meeting to do this?
Yeah, we can do that.
Next Monday, right?
We were going to possibly cancel next Monday, because I don't think we need to have it, because this one was so close.
So I have on the agenda the 13th and the 27th, so I'm, I guess we have to decide if we want to have just one meeting in November. It didn't really look like it was very busy.
Why do we have the 13th and the 27th?
I think I skipped out.
It's the first and the, we always do the first and the third.
Unless the first is a holiday, the first Monday's a holiday or something.
I think the 20th works, or the 21st, whenever that-
27th, that's the Monday after Thanksgiving.
No, do the first, go before that, the week before that.
20th.
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 That's when we're scheduled. We're scheduled for the 6th and the 20th.
All right, so we can wait till the 6th to do this, though?
No, we're not going to have a 6th.
Can we wait till the 20th to do that?
Can we wait till the 20th to do it? That's, the, Orleans Board is going to vote on it next week.
Wait, we're not meeting on the 13th? I'm sorry.
No.
I'm confused. Okay.
We're going to meet on the 20th. I mean, we can add a meeting if you guys want to meet next week, it's just that we don't have a lot for that agenda.
Yeah, I won't be here next week, that's why I was just trying to clarify.
I'd just like this, to be able to do this as quickly as possible. So what are your recommendations?
Well, Suzanne hasn't read it, otherwise, I mean, I've read the letter.
How about if we all, how about if we all, do we have to vote on it, or can we all just get back to you and say it's okay? Or not okay?
How about if you all get back to me and say yes or no?
Okay.
And then if, then we can always vote on it on the 20th, but that way, we can get it started if there's a consensus of the board.
And we can email it out.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay, Suzanne?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So we don't meet the 13th, but we do meet-
That's it for me.
New and upcoming agenda items, and our follow-up from previous items. Does anybody have anything?
Jackie?
I have.
Suzanne?
Suzanne has something.
Suzanne, you can go first.
I mean, I, I was wondering about a tiny tea time update, because I know that we've talked about it, and it's kind of like a little bit behind the scenes in process, and I was wondering if we had a little update for the public.
Sure. I think the last one we did was when Paul came in September, but basically, and I was actually asked by Mary Nee from the Zoning Task Force to perhaps do a flash update or some kind of something, so we can go forward and do something like that, too. But basically, what we are working on currently is that we've hired a consultant, his name is Ted Brovitz, and Mr. Brovitz is working with the Zoning Task Force to create a form-based code for the town of Eastham. So basically, they will, this is the last zoning necessity for us in that district, so it'll cover from Bracket Road forward all the way to the Wellfleet Line, basically to take a look at what kind of density we can allow and what it needs to look like and feel like, what the setbacks are, you know, very specifically for that zone, before we do any development. Right? So that's part one. And then the Environmental Partners Group Transportation Engineer is also working on what our connecting Main Street might be able to look like or be like. So those two pieces are being worked on kind of behind the scenes, you're right, although there is a public forum, it's not open to the public, but for business owners who are interested in having some input into that form-based code, PAW, Lag, and the Community Development Department will be doing a workshop on December 2nd. So that will, but basically, it's, it's looking at the last piece in zoning and trying to figure out whether we can create a road that would be like a Main Street. Those are our two tasks. And we are working very slowly through Tea Time in Town Center Plaza, and I know it's frustrating, but we really do need to have a wastewater plan before we can really tackle development in the area significantly. So we are, we are moving along, it's just at a very slow pace, deliberate pace, I like to think.
And it's the like slightly, maybe less interesting, I mean, it's not necessarily less interesting to us, but in terms of, we went through the whole public facing process to gather input, and now it's kind of like the, you have to be a really big nerd to be like, yeah, I want to look at form-based code.
Right, this is like the making sausage part, you know, where we're, we're taking sort of the public input and saying, how is it going to fit in this zone, and what protections do we need to have in place, and, you know, to protect our rural identity but allow some density at the same time, so.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Jamie, did you have something?
I did. So just for some future agenda items that we've been chatting about, I was looking at the cap potential to look at, the cap on the number of short-term rentals in town, in the town at large, in addition, a cap on the number of short-term rentals per person. So it's two different categories to look at. I think Provincetown was just looking at some of this as well. And it's something we've talked about, mainly so people have awareness that this is coming, too, so that if you do have a short-term rental, it's extremely important that it gets registered with the town, because if this cap, you know, should this cap finally go into place, or should we decide to do this, you know, you don't want to be left out. So I was hoping maybe that's something we could talk about, decide, you know, maybe think about where that, where that number is.
So one limits townwide-
Right.
-number, a hard number, and it's whatever you have at the time, correct?
No, you can, I mean, it can be.
It can't be lower.
It can't be lower.
It can't be lower than what you, right.
Right, exactly. It can be higher, it can be the same, but it can't be lower.
And then the other one is per-
Individual.
Individual, okay.
Right.
Jamie, what's the definition of a short-term rental? Time-wise?
30 days or less.
30 days, yeah. I thought so.
So if you rent for a week, you're considered a short-term rental?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So that would pick up probably most of the vacation rentals in Eastham.
Yeah, correct. Yep. So again, we, we've gotten some, we've pulled together some examples of what other communities have done, so we can, you know, send those to you. We're also sending all this information to the Zoning Task Force, asking them to take a look. I know they're busy with form-based code, but definitely, we would want their input on this as well, and then we can come back with a work session or something to do. Did you want to do the, you wanted to do the fractional ownership as well?
That, yes, that would be probably another, in addition to this, looking at the, a bylaw on time shares and fractional ownership of residential properties.
So you would get the baseline, would try and get the baseline from the current database that we have of people that ask for rental certificates?
Correct. That's where we would start. That would give us our starting place, I think.
So if you have somebody that was renting for a month, rents, rents a house for a month at a time, that's not a short-term rental, right?
31 days.
It has to be over.
31 days?
30, 30 days.
Now, in the town of Eastham, we still require a rental certificate, but it's not considered a short-term rental.
Okay, but that's 30 or 31?
31 days would no longer be a short-term rental.
30 days is short-term.
Correct, 30 or under.
Yes.
Which, I mean, most, you know, most of the vacation rentals out here are a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, these monthly rentals for July and August are not short-term.
If it's 31 days.
Yeah, if I rent for all of July, or if I rent for all of August, it's 31 days.
Most people do that, they do a four-week.
Four-week thing, yeah, I understand.
So that would be under, yeah.
That would be under, 28 would be under.
And again, it's something to talk about and discuss, it's not necessarily something you guys have to do.
Exactly. But I think it's something that we need to just keep talking about, and even if we do it annually until we're ready, until we feel like we're at a place where it's time.
There's also some questions about like cottage colonies and how they fit in some of those, when you try to limit.
So that's, yeah, that was on my list, too, yeah, exactly, is seeing, because I think that was a problem we were, we had run into previously, was is there a way to get at that scenario where you're not negatively impacting a cottage colony, because that is something different.
We feel it's something different. For some reason, the law doesn't, I mean, under-
Some places don't, right.
Right, under the multiple ownership thing, which I, it's all on one property, I don't understand how it, it's considered multiple.
I think there's just something that's culturally-
You need to hear.
-culturally accepted and historic about a cottage colony on Cape Cod.
Yeah.
Right, all the Cape Towns had them, whether you love them or not, they're, they're part of our-
There's not many left.
-rental history, and there aren't that many left, so we definitely don't want to undercut their business.
I agree.
And they weren't necessarily meant to be, it's not like a single-family home.
Right.
It's meant to be, you know, there's, some of them are winterized, some of them are very small, you know, it was meant for the purpose that it was built.
Of a vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I would like to see the time share and the fractional potentially as articles for this coming town meeting.
So how would you handle a motel?
A motel? Well, that's exempt, because it's going to be registered with the state as a-
It's a business, and they're in a business zone.
Right.
Right? So we've accepted motels and hotels as businesses, not residential.
They already have a tax, which is now the same as the short-term rental tax.
I think we're getting at more residentially zoned spaces, as opposed to mixed-use or commercial.
Are we able to either put this, did you want it on a future agenda, or did we want a session just for this?
I think we can just add it to the agenda.
I think we should add it to agenda, but do it like as a work session so that we can, you know, maybe invite Paul, the members of the Zoning Task Force, Rachel from, you know, Housing, perhaps the Health Department, you know, just do the whole-
Hash it out together.
Yep.
Great. And I have one other thing written down, if it's okay for me to keep moving, okay. The affordable housing tax exemption. Now, I believe Jackie, we chatted about this.
Yep.
Gosh, I don't have good notes written. Do you want to expand on that a little more?
Yeah, basically, some communities have adopted, Provincetown in particular, has adopted a tax exemption for people who, for owners who rent their houses year-round as opposed to short-term, to, to a person of moderate to low income, so if you-
Eighty percent AMI.
Eighty percent or less. So if you do that, and we can certainly create guidelines, but they get a tax break for doing that. And it is, I don't know if it seriously incentivizes people to rent year-round affordably, but it's a way to do it annually so that people do not have to, the owner doesn't have to commit to renting their house or their cottage or their apartment affordable for the rest of their lives. There's no deed restriction. It's annual that they get to say, and if they do it, they get the exemption, if they don't, they don't.
And it has to be eighty percent AMI.
Mm-hmm.
We don't get to change that, do we?
I don't know, because I think we have to look at the statute for that.
Yeah, it would be a statutory provisions that we'd have to follow.
Now, we, I, you know, you and I have talked about offering second home owner, home, second home homeowners, some sort of tax reduction if they rent their second home year-round.
And that's what this is?
So we, no, it's not.
But it wasn't necessarily locked into affordable, though.
So I don't think, and we can check, but I don't think the state would allow us to do that.
Right.
But-
If we can raise the AMI.
But what we can talk about is giving an incentive to people, homeowners, who are renting short-term now, that want to convert to year-round. The town could do that. So in other words, instead of a tax break, you'd get a subsidy.
A subsidy, oh, it's the same, basically, theoretically the same thing.
Yes, theoretically the same thing.
So it would go, this is from someone who would rent short-term, then goes to renting all year, it's not renting short-term and decide, okay, I've retired, now I'm going to move here, so it's going to be very-
No, it has to be a year-round rental, has to create a year-round rental.
Year-round rental.
But not indefinitely.
No.
Year, but, well, if we're going to, if we're going to give money, okay, it'd be just a one-year shot, or an annual amount of money?
I think for, for, I was, when we first discussed this a couple of years ago, I think we were thinking of having a period of time that, so a family or an individual would feel like they had safe housing for a little bit, so, you know, at least two years, perhaps three years, so they, everyone would agree to a term ahead of time.
Okay.
So I'm putting, we're, as we're talking, I'm putting a list together, and we can just-
And I just kind of, I'm looking at all these as, like, we always approach every year as tools, right?
Yeah.
These are all different tools that we should be talking about to help, you know, come at this housing situation, because it's not going to be one solution. And some of the tools I like, some of the tools I don't really love, I don't love this tool, I don't like the idea of giving money back to a second homeowner, you know, the idea of giving money back to someone who obviously is doing just fine is a struggle for me to wrap my brain around, but I think that in the end, the benefit of something like that is for the greater good of the community, and it does make sense.
Yep.
So, you know, I mean, I, but that's why we put it on the agenda, so we can talk about it.
Well, it goes hand in part and parcel with the cap idea that you have, too, Jamie, right? So the idea is to subsidize or make the differential between renting year-round versus what you can get renting for ten or twelve weeks.
Right.
Smaller.
So that it's worth it.
Is it crazy that it's that drastically different?
And I'll send you-
It's weekly versus monthly rent, they're about the same.
I'll send you, the Provincetown just did a study.
Work. We were talking about that.
They just did a study, and so I'll send you that, too, because it really, it's more, it's less money than you think because of the things that you don't have to pay for with an annual rental. You don't have cleaning costs every week, you don't have to pay the realtor, whoever who's renting it for you, so there's all kinds of costs involved in short-term rentals that there aren't in a year-round rental, so the cost differential kind of goes down because of that.
Isn't there one other thing we talked about, upping, or we're going to talk about it in fees, I know, but upping the short-term rental certificate?
Yes, cost.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to look at fees very seriously this year to be in line with communities around us, and especially that one, I think, because we have not raised that fee in forever. I think it's been the same, period.
It was, yeah, it was seventy-five dollars, maybe ten years ago.
And now it's, yeah.
Yeah. Now it's a hundred, so it's not changed much yet.
Yeah, that's got to change. Yeah, so maybe add that on there, too, yeah.
Amy, do you have something?
Yeah, another thing you brought up, Jackie, was a letter to Sarah Peak about the community fund.
Oh, yeah. I don't know if that's necessary, because I just talked to Sarah Fernandez, her aide, on Friday, and it has passed through the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. They think it should be voted on in this legislative section, session before Christmas in the House, and then it will be moving to the Senate. So it looks like we're, we're in line to get it done by June 30th.
So we don't need a reminder letter.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
If it gets snagged in the Senate, we can write Julie in a letter.
That's an important, that is, for me, a very important piece of legislation, because it's a, we can target help to those who need it, as opposed to a blanket, here's a-
Right.
Yeah. And it gives you, again, a huge new tool.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, that was, we're going to do that in other business, weren't we?
No, that's fine.
That's okay.
That's fine.
I just realized I was a little ahead of the-
So formal here.
Okay, is there anything else? Anybody has? All right, let's go to minutes. We need to approve the minutes of September 25th and the minutes of October 16th. Let's do those separate, because I'm going to need to abstain from at least one of them.
Right.
October 16th disappeared in one.
Yeah, it disappeared from the-
It was there.
It's gone, yeah.
So we'll have to do those next meeting, but we could do September 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th.
Second.
I have one item, right in, who's there, right in the top, you have Vice Chair, semicolon, there wasn't any, and then with no name on the, on the list, if you just-
Change that.
Yeah, I, if I read it right, let me make sure.
Is there anything else? Okay, we had, do we have a motion in a second? I don't remember now.
Did you second it?
I seconded.
You had a motion in a second, I guess.
So if there's no discussion, let's vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jury?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
Well, I abstained because I wasn't here for that meeting. Okay, and we'll put off October 16th. Other business and correspondence, does anybody have anything?
I think that was it. One quick thing, Art and I have been attending cert, cert training.
That photo is amazing.
I just got my CPR certificate.
Did you get it?